Well, welcome, everybody. I'm going to go ahead and call this meeting to order. We'll start with an invocation, which we observed by a moment of silence, followed by the Pledge of Allegiance. I pledge allegiance. Clerk, will you please call the roll? Agent.
Here.
Hallie Burton.
Here.
Annie Keith. Nash.
Here.
Willetts.
Here.
Weddings.
Here.
Five present, one absent. Thank you. And next up, we've got requests for approval meetings from our budget workshop and day meeting of the June 27th.
Madam Mayor, I request approval and move that we approve the city council minutes of the budget workshop and regular day meeting of June 27th.
Second.
Move motion and second discussion. Clerk. Willetts.
Yes.
Weddings.
Yes.
Agent.
Yes.
Hallie Burton.
Yes.
Nash.
Yes.
All in favor, motion carries. And next up, under special business, we've got some appointments and reappointments. First, the reappointment of Dana Zuckerman to the Design Review Committee for a term that would end July 2027.
Madam Mayor.
Yes.
Before we go into special business, I would like to move that we accept the amended agenda. It had, the original agenda had an incorrect date for one of the appointments. The amendment was posted online to reflect that change.
Second.
We have a motion and second. Clerk, will you call the roll? Willetts.
Yes.
Weddings.
Yes.
Agent.
Yes.
Hallie Burton.
Yes.
Nash.
Yes.
All in favor, motion carries. Thank you. And now, the reappointment of Dana Zuckerman.
Madam Mayor, I ask unanimous consent that we reappoint Dana Zuckerman to the Design Review Committee for a four-year term ending July 2027.
Without objection. Dana is not with us today, but I want to thank her for her continued service to the city of Boise and appreciate that she was willing to re-up for another term. And now, we have the appointment of Buffy Jones to the Boise City Ada County Housing Authority for a term that would end in October 2026.
Madam Mayor, I ask unanimous consent for the appointment of Buffy Jones to the Boise City Ada County Housing Authority for a term ending October 26. And we'll also add that this was the amendment to the appointments.
Great, without objection. Well, Ms. Jones is here with us tonight. Tonight, you're welcome to say hello, say anything if you'd like to, but also don't have to if you don't want to. No. Thanks for joining us and thank you for your service. Really, really appreciate it.
Madam Mayor, I also reviewed Buffy's application for Boise City Ada County Housing Authority and really think that her experience and expertise will be of value to all of our residents and thank you for your service.
And next, we have the reappointment of Bill Vasconcellos for Airport Commissioner for a term ending July 2026.
Madam Mayor, I ask unanimous consent that we reappoint Bill Vasconcellos for Airport Commissioner for a three-year term ending in July 2026.
Without objection. And I'd like to thank Bill for re-upping. Bill is somebody that really loves the Airport Commission. Like, really, really loves the Airport Commission, so it's great that he wanted to stay on for another term and appreciate his willingness to do so. And with that, we'll move into the consent agenda. All items with an asterisk are considered to be routine by the council and will be enacted by one motion. There's no separate discussion on these items unless a council member or citizen still requests, in which case the item will be removed from the general order of business and considered in its normal sequence.
Madam Mayor, I ask, or I move that we approve the consent agenda.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Any discussion? Clerk, will you please call the roll?
Willetts.
Yes.
Weddings.
Yes.
Agent.
Yes.
Hallie Burton.
Yes.
Nash.
Yes.
All in favor, motion carries. Thank you. And now, we'll move into ordinances. We have none on first, but we do have one on second reading.
Madam Mayor, I ask unanimous consent that all ordinances on the second reading calendar be read by number and title only and filed for the third reading calendar.
Without objection.
ORD-27-23, an ordinance, ZOA 23-00001, repealing and replacing Title 11 Development Code Boise City Code. Establishing and converting zoning districts and overlays in accordance with the policies set forth in the adopted comprehensive plan. Establishing use regulations, development and design standards, subdivision standards, administration processes and application procedures, provisions for enforcement and penalty and definitions, providing for adopted specific plans, repealing all ordinances or parts thereof to the extent they conflict with passage and inaction of this ordinance, providing for severability if any part is adjudged invalid or unconstitutional, approving a summary of the ordinance and providing an effective date.
Thank you. And now, we'll move into third reading. We've got several on the third reading calendar today.
Madam Mayor, I move that further reading of ORD 20-23 and ORD 22-23 be dispensed with and reflect that it has been read a third time in full.
Second.
We have a motion and second. Clerk, will you call the roll?
Willetts.
Yes.
Weddings.
Yes.
Agent.
Yes.
Hallie Burton.
Yes.
Nash.
Yes.
All in favor, motion carries.
ORD-20-23, an ordinance repealing Boise City Code Title III, Chapter 14, entitled Stationless Shared Mobility Programs and striking it from the code. Amending Boise City Code Title VI, Chapter 13, Section 1, to add new definitions and amend existing ones. Adding a new Boise City Code Title VI, Chapter 13, Section 2, entitled Rental of Shared Micro Mobility Devices and renumbering the subsequent sections accordingly. Amending the renumbered Boise City Code Title VI, Chapter 13, Sections 3, 5, 6, 7, 11, 16, 21, 25, and 29, to remove unnecessary language, correct internal code or section references, correct grammatical errors and provide minor clarifications to existing provisions. Amending the renumbered Boise City Code Title VI, Chapter 13, Section 4, to allow e-scooters to have seats and to remove unnecessary language, correct grammatical errors and provide minor clarifications to existing provisions. Amending the renumbered Boise City Code Title VI, Chapter 13, Section 22, to clarify registration license fee language. Amending the renumbered Boise City Code Title VI, Chapter 13, Section 23, clarifying fine amounts found on the city's master fine and fee schedule and amending minor grammatical errors. Amending the renumbered Boise City Code Title VI, Chapter 13, Section 24, to reference Boise City Code Section 1-4-2 and generally clean up code language, approving a summary of the ordinance and providing an effective date. ORD-22-23, an ordinance, CAR 22-00046, for property located at 3121 East Starview Drive. Amending zoning classifications of the city of Boise City to change the classification of real property, particularly described in Section 1 of this ordinance, and adjacent rights of way from A-1, open lands, to R-1C, single-family residential, eight units per acre, setting forth a reasoned statement as far as such zone change and providing an effective date.
Yes.
I move that ORD 20-23, RES 325-23, and ORD 22-23 be approved.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Any discussion? All right, clerk, will you call the roll?
Willetts.
Yes.
Weddings.
Yes.
Agent.
Yes.
Hallie Burton.
Yes.
Nash.
Yes.
All in favor, motion carries. Thank you. And next up, we will move into public hearings, the new business section of the evening. First off, is the budget hearing. And then, we'll have, we have hearings. They're somewhat more formalities, but if anybody's here to talk either of these, of course, you can for both the foregone property tax hearing, and that's related to the foregone that we're not taking this year, as well as then the new and increased fee hearing. So people are welcome to speak multiple times, or you can share all of your comments in one. It's really up to you. And with that, Eric will provide a presentation, then we'll hear from the public.
Thank you very much, Madam Mayor, member of the council. We do have four public hearings, all related to the fiscal year 24 budget public hearings. I have three distinct presentations to go, to go through. The first one is related to the fiscal year 2024 budget in total, as well as foregone property taxes. Subsequent to that, we'll go through our fees, and then after that, we will hopefully end up with our development impact fee public hearing. Looking at the fiscal year 2024 proposed budget, I'll start with just an overview as to the process that we've been through, the journey we've, we've taken to get to today. We've had multiple discussions with the city council beginning in April. We had a workshop on May 23rd. After the release of the budget document on June 16th, we had another budget workshop on June 27th. The budget document itself was released, as mentioned, on June 16th. It's available on the city's website. When it was released, there was opportunities for the public to provide feedback. That feedback has been packaged and was submitted to the city council for review. I'll also mention, as always, that the public has the ability to interact with the current year budget in real time, as well as prior year budgets through the city's budget transparency tool, which is Open Book. I'll hit on some high-level themes before we get into detail on the fiscal year 2024 budget. And the first theme I'll discuss is an evergreen theme that we discuss each year, which is fiscal responsibility. In developing the fiscal year 2024 proposed budget, we conformed with state law, which requires that the general fund budget is balanced. When ensuring that the budget was balanced, we not only looked at fiscal year 2024, ensuring revenues met expenditures, but we also took a 10-year or long-term view to ensure that any base additions are sustainable over time. In developing the budget, we also sought to ensure that we appropriately treated one-time revenues versus ongoing revenues and dedicated any one-time revenues to one-time needs and ongoing revenues to ongoing needs. The budget was developed in response to the current economic climate. There are allowances included within the budget for potential recessionary impacts should the economy fall into a recession. We've also tried to account for inflationary impacts in various areas within the budget. Second theme I'll hit on is property tax relief. The fiscal year 2024 proposed budget includes base growth of 2%, which is less than the statutorily allowed 3% base growth. When combined with assessment data that we've seen from the county, as well as unquantified impacts from House Bill 292, which was approved by the state legislature earlier this fiscal year, we anticipate favorable conditions for residential property taxpayers for the first time in over a decade. Also included in the fiscal year 2024 proposed budget is the continuation of a property tax rebate program into fiscal year 2024, following a successful rollout of that program in fiscal year 23. We saw approximately 90% participation in fiscal year 23 with some much-needed relief to eligible community members, and we hope to see that again next year. The fiscal year 24 budget was developed in response to growth and delivery of, continued delivery of high-quality services for the community. Idaho continues to be one of the fastest-growing states in, in the country. As a matter of fact, Idaho led all states in year-over-year percentage population growth from 2020 to 2022. The Treasure Valley has grown by approximately 14 and a half percent over the last five years. The proposed investments included within this budget will help the city respond to increased demand for services. Finally, the fiscal year 2024 budget addresses pressing community needs. Those community needs are outlined throughout the budget document, again, which is available on the city's website. Some of those include investments towards our exist, existing affordable housing, costs for emergency sheltering, significant investments in public safety and resources to support the modern zoning code implementation. An overview of the fiscal year 2024 budget, looking at all funds. 2024 proposed budget includes planned expenses of $747.1 million, not including the contingent appropriation, which is outlined on page 117 of the budget document. Of that $747.1 million, you can see enterprise funds making up approximately half of that general fund, at 40% and smaller percentages for our capital funds and other funds. The general fund budget for fiscal year 2024 is recommended at $300, $300.9 million. The general fund accounts for operating costs associated with general governmental services, things such as police, fire, parks and recreation, and library. General fund is primarily supported by taxes. You can think about things like property tax, sales tax, liquor tax, as well as things like development fees and certain user fees. Our capital funds proposed budget is $27.1 million, at 4% of the overall budget. That $27.1 million includes infrastructure projects, major equipment and major repairs and maintenance for general governmental functions. Again, things like police, fire, parks, and libraries. This category is primarily supported by taxes through an annual transfer from the general fund to our capital fund, but also supported by other, other funding streams such as development impact fees. Enterprise funds, again, making up just under half of the overall budget at $367.2 million. Included in that category are both operating and capital costs for the airport, geothermal, solid waste and water renewal funds. This category is primarily supported by service users. And finally, at 7% other funds comprising $52 million. That other funds includes our debt service fund, our risk and workers' comp funds, health, housing, and fleet. Focusing in on the general fund, fiscal year 2024 budgeted revenues are 1.7% lower than fiscal year 2023. You can see the, the history of revenues in the general fund on this slide. The decline from fiscal year 2024 as compared to 2023 is primarily attributable to lower carry, lower carryover from the prior year. So, carryover funds from fiscal year 2023 into fiscal year 2024, as well as a high degree of one-time funding that was included in the fiscal, in the prior year budget fiscal year 2023, primarily associated with ARPA, American Rescue Plan Act. Looking at the general fund revenue picture at, again, $309 million, you can see that property tax makes up the significant majority of overall revenues at 60%. The other categories outlined on this slide, I'll focus on some of the larger ones. Sales tax at 9% of overall revenues, departmental revenues at 12% and development fees at 5% of the overall general fund revenues. Moving to property tax, the fiscal year 2024 budget estimate is just under $181 million. As mentioned at the outset of this presentation, the assumption is 2% base growth, as opposed to the 3% that is allowed. That 2% base growth allows for cost increases on existing services. Also, in the property tax revenue estimate is 1.1% growth for new construction, which is paid by new payers associated with growth. In total, the average base growth since the beginning of the pandemic is 1.86%. And in total, between this year's 2% and prior year, prior year's taking less than the maximum, 7.5 million in total base relief is available for Boise taxpayers. Again, the 24 budget includes a property tax rebate continuation of a property tax rebate program for qualifying homeowners. This is the second year and would represent a total investment of $2.4 million over those two years. There is no use of foregone property taxes assumed within the fiscal year 24 budget, nor is it assumed within our base case forecast over the next 10 years. The growth for property taxes is well below the 8% cap that is, that was established by the state legislature in calendar year 2021. We do expect year-over-year declines for most property, most residential properties when it comes to their property tax bill. That is due to assessment trends where this year we saw residential, residential assessed values decreasing with commercial increasing. The city's budgeting approach, again, taking less than the maximum growth and the, to date, unquantified impacts of House Bill 292. On this slide, you can see the levy rate for the city of Boise and its historical performance. You can see the levy rate in blue on the right-hand side of this slide. You can see that in most recent years, the levy rate has declined, and that has primarily been attributable to rising taxable values. So, as the taxable values increase, the levy rate will decline, and as taxable values decrease, the levy, the levy rate will increase. You can see that the, the levy rate for fiscal year 2024 has a slight increase as compared to 2023, attributable to the slight decrease that we're seeing in taxable value. This slide outlines the tax burden within the city of Boise for commercial and residential property taxpayers. Going back to year, to the year 2000, you can see that there was approximately an equal split between residential and commercial. Over time, commercial took less and less of the overall burden with residential taking on more and more, particularly over the last five or six years, due to rising assessments on, on residential properties or the pace of, of the increase on residential properties compared to a lower rate of increase on commercial properties, as well as the homeowner's exemption not being indexed to keep up with that growth. In fiscal year 2024, you can see a slight correction where residential would make up approximately 67% of the overall pie, commercial at 33%, still far off from where it was in the year 2000. We will have to continue to monitor and evaluate whether this is a trend that we see correction in these two, these two sectors moving closer together, but certainly for fiscal year 2024, this is good news. Looking at the average homeowner impact, this is a, a table that we show each year as part of the budget process, and I'll walk through it section by section. The top third of this table, you can see the impact if the city were to have taken the full 3% increase. And I'll walk through line by line. On line two, you can see that the assessed value for the average-priced home within the city of Boise in fiscal year 2023, or calendar year 2023, is, has declined by 13.8% as compared to the prior year. With the homeowner's exemption unchanging on line three, the taxable value for that home decreases by 17.7%. Can see that on line four. Line five, you can see the levy rate. The levy rate increases as assessed values decrease, and you can see the levy rate increasing by 12.1%. But on line six, you can see the impact on taxes on that average home. And if the city were to have taken the full 3% increase, the taxes on the average home would have gone down by 7.8% or 120, approximately $124. On lines eight through 14, you can see the, the complete flip side of that if the city were not to have taken any growth in its budget. Lines nine, 10, 11 are mirror images of lines two, three, and four. But you can see on line 13, the city taxes would have gone down by 10.4% or $166. Lines 16 through 24 represent what's actually included in the fiscal year 24 budget. City taxes on the average-priced home are expected to go down by approximately 8.7% or $138. The cost of the 2% base growth by the city is approximately $29 on that average-priced home. That $138 increase is not reflective of a benefit that all taxpayers are expected to receive, receive and see on their November property tax bills, attributable to House Bill 292. And in the future, we, we hope to be able to provide estimates as to the relief available through that bill going forward.
So, can I just repeat that in a different way? This, this is the first year that that rebate from the state is coming, and so it's hard to predict what that'll mean for our average home, average-priced home until we see it happen once, and then after that, you'll be able to predict that as part of this.
We are certainly going to try. There are, there are numerous factors that go into that relief, some, some of which may be difficult for us to quantify as we go forward. There are things included within that relief, such as the amount of debt across the state for the educational system. There's population impacts, and there's a, there's a whole series of different impacts in there. We're certainly going to learn from this, and we'll see if there's more proactive things we can include in future cycles.
Right, thanks.
Related to our foregone property taxes, again, the recommendation is to take lower than the maximum, 2% versus 3%. The city will collect approximately $1.8 million less than allowable due to that recommendation. The city council has the option to declare that amount as foregone, and by doing so, all or any portion of that amount can, may be recovered in subsequent years. The current foregone balance is $5.7 million and would increase to $7.5 million upon approval of that resolution. Included in the language of the resolution is a recommendation or intent language that in the future, foregone would not be taken in a recessionary period.
And to be clear, that mirrors the language that we placed back in 2021. Is that similar language?
Thank you, Mayor. Yeah, we, we've used that language the last couple of times that we have taken less than the base growth, that's the max growth. There is no current plans to utilize the foregone balance, and any future use of foregone would be subject to restrictions placed by the legislature in 2021. Looking at general fund expenditures, again, 300, $300.9 million. Personnel makes up the majority at 70% of overall expenses. MNO and major equipment, which is really our non-personnel category for things like supplies, professional services, fuel, insurance, things of that nature, represent 19% of the general fund budget. Contingencies at 1%, transfers to other funds, primarily our capital fund, represent 6%. And then, VRT, our city's contribution to public transportation, 4% of the overall budget and 5% of our property tax budget. Looking at general fund expenditures by department, you can see that just over half of the overall general fund budget is dedicated towards public safety, police, and fire. Approximately 16% is dedicated towards our Parks and Recreation, Library, and Arts and History Departments. Planning and Development Services at approximately 6%. Our Support Departments. Our support departments, finance and administration, human resources, IT and legal at approximately sixteen point seven percent. However, I'll mention on that slide, there are numerous public facing services that are included within, within that sixteen point six percent. Contractual services, contingencies and transfers at under four percent and public works also at under four percent of the general fund budget. Looking at staffing growth trends, we're going to go back to fiscal year twenty seventeen. Fiscal years twenty seventeen through fiscal year twenty twenty, pre-COVID. The city was averaging within the general fund growth of approximately twenty eight positions per year. In fiscal year twenty twenty one, there were very few additions due to uncertainties around COVID. The prior two fiscal years before the one that we're talking about today, we were adding approximately forty seven positions each year to catch up on past hiring deficits as well as to maintain service levels due to community growth. Fiscal year twenty twenty four can be categorized as a return to normal. You can see the addition of twenty six point seven positions within the general fund. On the left hand side, you can see staff additions in the general fund by year. And the orange line represents the trailing average of positions and you can see that fiscal year twenty twenty four, when looking at that seven year term is below the trailing average. Another view at position additions within the general fund and the twenty six point seven FTE that are recommended. Twelve of those positions are in support of public safety. Nine positions within our police department and three within our fire department. Five and a half of those positions are cost neutral or revenue supported. Two positions are in support of the modern zoning code. Just under three and a half positions are in support of our internal service departments. Legal, IT and DFA, Department of Finance. One and a half positions to support the city council as we move into districting next year. And then two and a quarter positions elsewhere within the organization. Before we move into the public hearing, I'd be happy to stand for any questions that mayor or council might have.
Madam Mayor, I have a question for Eric, but maybe the chief would probably want to answer that as well. Chief coming up here. You didn't, you didn't get enough face time today. Thank you, Chief. One of the things that Eric brought up was the positions for public safety and there's obviously some for fire. But could you walk through how the nine positions in the police department will affect like daily living within Boise? I mean, there's obviously some staff there that's going to support. It'll ease up some, some officer demands, but what will this do for your department to get these additional positions?
May I take a moment to grab some notes so that I can ask you a question?
You want my book?
Madam Mayor, Councilmember Willetts, I apologize for not having that information at the tip of my tongue. Hopefully I have it.
You, you've had a lot today. It's A okay.
So. The positions that we are asking for in the police department, a total of nine, there would be five of those would be sworn positions, so police officer positions. Two of those are at the lieutenant rank, one for our professional standards division, specifically our internal affairs unit. That lieutenant would oversee a number of processes and a number of things, but primarily responsible for internal affairs, complaint investigations, as well as things like the recruiting, hiring and training processes. So that is a critical position we feel is necessary as we move towards our goal of hiring the folks that we need to hire and getting them through that process as well as accountability and supervision and the performance of the officers who are in the field day to day interacting with our community members. So we want to ensure through our processes that those officers are indeed conducting themselves in the manner that we expect. And that's part of that. The second lieutenant position is in our criminal investigation division, specifically our special victims unit. We have a unit that is offsite, not housed necessarily at the police department, but is primarily down at our faces or justice center. And those are some of the most critical and intensive investigations involving some of the most heinous crimes, crimes against children specifically. And those folks undergo a lot as part of those investigations. And so we want to make sure that they are having their needs taken care of, that they are performing those investigations to the best of their ability and that they have the resources necessary to support them in that. And one of those things that we identified was they are under the supervision of a lieutenant that has all of the CID units, the detective units, with the exception of our undercover narcotics units. And so the span of control, especially for those highly sensitive investigations, we felt was, was in need of improvement. And so that's the other lieutenant position. And then just due to growing numbers and resources on the street, we are asking for an additional patrol sergeant again to address span of control issues so that sergeants are able to monitor calls in the field, deal with all those things and provide appropriate oversight and accountability to our patrol officers as they respond to the calls for service where the officers are interacting with people on a daily basis. Then we are asking for two officers into our training division because we have a number of vacancies and we have a need to bring on and onboard officers through that hiring and training process. We want to have the infrastructure there in our training division to be able to process more officers through our academy and our field training program so that we can make up ground and fill the vacancies that we have on the street. So that's our sworn staff. And then we have two administrative coordinators that we are asking for. One coordinator that would split half of their time with our fleet and half of their time in our supply. So the fleet is administered by one professional staff member, all of the coordination of vehicle maintenance and stocking of supplies and vehicles and all of those things. And we find that she is very overworked and needs some, some assistance. So we'd like to provide some help in the, in the form of a half of a a person's time being spent helping her and the other half in supply as we grow and outfit officers with equipment and uniforms and so forth. One community service specialist in our detective unit gives that unit the opportunity to do some of those things that a sworn officer can have some time freed up to better investigate. And so that, that's in a nutshell, the two administrative coordinators or admin coordinators would be support staff for the officers, giving them the support and the time that they need to better interact with the public and investigate crimes as well as respond to calls for service. Does that help?
Yeah, yeah, absolutely. Madam Mayor, one more follow up. So Chief, both you and fire came at, you know, the beginning of our budget process and just talked about the growing valley. And even though Boise isn't growing at the same rate as our surrounding areas, they come here, like we're the capital city. So we bear the brunt of the growth in a lot of ways. And you talked about this tipping point when it comes to population and what we need. This, this is a good start. Talk to us about what this will look long term. You know, because obviously we're going to need more of this continually because everybody is growing.
Madam Mayor, Councilmember Willetts, that is, that is absolutely the case and there is more to consider than just population numbers, numbers of people who live inside the city limits. This is a unique city to provide policing services in, in that we have things that many cities around us don't have. We have an airport, we have a university, we have folks coming into the downtown core to work and to recreate at different times of the day and the night. And some of our, some of our partner agencies don't have some of those challenges that we do face. And so we have a need to grow and to fill vacancies as well as increase the number of officers and support staff that we have so that we can meet the expectations and the needs not only of our citizens or residents in Boise, but of all those people who come into our community and come into our city and utilize the services that we provide. Those include policing services and we want to provide the best services we can for everybody who comes, whether they visit or reside in the city.
Thank you.
All right. Thank you. I just want to make sure that are there other questions not for the chief before we move into the public hearing portion?
If questions come up, will we have the opportunity then to follow up?
Okay, so I'm going to, I've got a sheet, but this is, I don't think this is everybody. So I'll start with this. And then if you were here and you wanted to talk, but, but I didn't call your name, just raise your hand and come on up. And then we'll check to see if there are folks online. Right now there are no folks online. And we'll, we'll do a check in after we've talked with everybody here too. All right. First, Mark Salisbury. Typically, we have you be here. If that's, there's a, if you have a, did you bring a presentation? Is that why you're wondering? Cause there's a clicker.
Yeah. Oh, I didn't know I could actually do a presentation, but I do have some words to say.
Okay.
We have a poster to, to help you see, we hope you can see as well. Well, hello, city council members. Just city council members, Mayor McLean, and I believe library director, Doris in the room as well somewhere.
Yep, she's over there.
Hello. My name is Mark Salisbury. I live in West Boise, close to Eagle Road. This is not the first city council budget meeting that I've attended. Some of you may recognize me from the March twenty twenty two budget planning meeting. In that meeting, I showed the library gap that exists in West Boise, or similar to this sign right here. And I suggested that we do something to fill this gap, the city acquire land to, to provide a library. I'm here again with this plea. West Boise needs equitable library services. I started twenty twenty three with a couple of questions. First question, what does library services and coverage look like? Thank you. What does library service and coverage look like in cities comparable to Boise? I've done research on this question. The other question, do people in West Boise and in general in the city care about equitable library access? To answer that second question, I've started a petition and a website, citizensforalibrary.org. As a group of volunteers passionate about libraries and the city, we've knocked doors and shared this petition with friends and neighbors. We were present at Ustick in Bloom, I saw you there, collecting signatures. Saturday, a few of us were at our local Albertsons talking to people. Last night, we had eight hundred and thirty five signatures from Boise citizens on this petition. As I checked my phone today, that number's gone up to eight hundred and forty four. Can I present this to you? Pass it along?
And we can pause for a second while you're doing that. And these will go into the record as well. So they'll be part of, they'll be referred to in the record.
Okay, I can send you an electronic document as well if you want.
Oh yeah, why don't you do that actually? Cause then it can be embedded into it.
I'm thrilled that people that I don't know are talking to each other about this initiative. It doesn't matter where we've gone. People have overwhelmingly supported improving library access in West Boise. When they see this map, they get it immediately. It doesn't matter if they're in the north end or the east end. Boiseans want a city for all and that includes West Boise. And the packets you've received is a list of individuals in Boise who want to see library access improved. Some of those have left comments who have signed online. I encourage you to read through these and, and see these comments. Boise has done a praiseworthy job of improving affordable housing. We've spent millions in this area. Also now our zoning code allows for more density. However, there is only so much the city can do and I believe should do in this area to improve affordable housing. I believe it's time to return the focus to core city services. I'd like to close with why I'm here today. When I moved to West Boise twenty years ago, I was annoyed at the lack of a library. Now I have five children. I recall when I walked with my dad to the Bookmobile, it was about a mile away from where I grew up.
Time.
It made a difference in my life. I want to see my children and our children in the city have the best opportunities available. To this end, I act that, I ask that we delay no further in taking action to improve library access in West Boise to make Boise a city for all library users.
Thank you.
Madam Mayor, I have some questions for Mark. Mark, can you talk a little bit about the methodology of this donut hole?
Oh, thank you. Yeah. So we have the libraries in Boise shown here as well as the neighboring cities. And each circle is two mile radius, which shows some of the overlap that exists between coverage, but also is an indicator somewhat of a bikeable distance. I think most people are willing to walk about a mile to go somewhere and maybe bike about two miles. When you look at the section of town, you see there's kind of an area about that size actually. Did I, did I answer the question or was there?
Yeah, just trying to get the scale. And then could you talk a little bit about what people say to you when you knock on their doors and say, hey, what about a library? Can you give us some color about that? I mean, I know that there's signatures, but what are people saying to you?
Yeah. One person, the first day that I went out, told me that they had written a letter to the editor on this topic and they were just like, wow, I'm so glad that, you know, that something's happening here. People have told me, oh yeah, I used to live in that part of town. And now I live over here and I'm glad I can get into a library, or I hear the opposite. I've heard people say, you know, it's about time. Thank you that you're stepping up to, to try to do something here.
Benmer, I have another question as well. Mark, it's good to see you. I do remember you and I believe your daughter coming to our budget workshop in twenty twenty two at Hillcrest. And I've also seen you at some of the library board meetings as well. So I appreciate you being there and I appreciate you being involved. I know since you've been to some of the library meetings and you've kind of been involved in some of the strategic planning, that you're also aware of the facilities plan that's kind of coming up. And I guess I would just like to get your input as far as are you asking for funding in the budget this year for this library? Or are you asking that this area be considered in that facilities study?
That's a great question. I, I think we could do both. I think this facilities plan is, is a good idea. I don't think that we need to wait for the facilities plan to be completed to recognize the hole that we have here. I think that we could acquire land. I know that we don't have like a, you know, portion of the budget that's labeled money for people who come to ask for a library. But I believe that, you know, if we're not here talking about this, starting this conversation, it's, I don't see the chances of it happening. So that's why I'm here. I, I would hope that, you know, if possible, we could find a way to acquire some land, at least start talking about this area specifically and identifying locations.
Thank you. Madam Mayor.
Yes.
I, I also remember you and your family coming to our budget interactive at Hillcrest and really appreciate it. And I think that, I mean, this is the kind of data and, you know, that when we look at making a facilities plan that we take into account, we make the very same maps. We did recently the same thing with our fire facilities plan, looking at radiuses and response times around potential fire stations. So I hope that you stay really engaged throughout that process. I envision many more of these maps coming out throughout the facilities planning. And just really appreciate your passion for libraries. I love libraries too. And I hope that everyone has equal access in the city as a result of the facilities plan. And I anticipate too, as part of that longer term planning, much like we did with fire stations some years back. longer term planning, much like we did with fire stations some years back, that there will be a funding mechanism that goes with that as well, probably in the form of a library bond. And encourage you to stay engaged throughout, throughout that as well. It seems like you have a lot of passion for it. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. All right. And now it up as Gary, I don't know if it's default or dufo. All right. Come on up. Yeah. How do you say it?
Good evening, Mayor, Madam Mayor, council members and city leaders.
What, will you drop the mic? I always have to do the same thing after, when I follow somebody. There you go.
Good evening, Madam Mayor, council members and city leaders. My name is Gary DeFauld. I live at 13487 West Hazel Nut Street in Boise, in Boise's Westernmost and newest neighborhood association, the Centennial Neighborhood Association. The Centennial Neighborhood Association was chartered in the fall of 2019. I currently serve as the association's president. I would like to highlight some of the Centennial Neighborhood Association's driving issues going into this new fiscal year, which where we are guided by our association's credo to make our centennial neighborhood a great place to live, to work and to raise a family. That phrase probably sounds familiar to a few of you. Centennial supports Citizens for a Library and the West Boise Needs a Library Too Initiative. Approximately, approximately 27,000 people live within what could be called that library desert. Our Centennial Neighborhood includes approximately 13,000 or half of those people in that undeserved, underserved area. We laud our mayor and council for having pointedly made a part of their agenda, making Boise a city for all with affordable housing, safety and walkable neighborhoods. Provisions need to be made for more equitable library service coverage for West Boise. Approximately 80% of Boiseans are within a walkable, bikeable distance of a public library. West Boise stands well outside that accessibility. Another issue, we need BPD funding to fill the open positions so that all areas of the city, such as our Centennial Neighborhood, would have patrol coverage, not just emergency services. Three, we need the completion of Charles McDevitt Park, which has been promised for several years. Although a fixed amount was set aside some years back, inflation has been ravaging that amount's adequacy. The time to act on that is now. Finally, and this is more of a concern, neighborhood testimony time allowed needs to be established in order to reflect the important importance and value of neighborhood associations and their unique ability to research, garner consensus and publicly, publicly present well filed out and substantive testimony on behalf of hundreds, if not thousands of their members. Centennial Neighborhood Association has pledged to its members to make our Centennial Neighborhood and all of Boise a great place to live, to work and raise a family. We appreciate the continued efforts of the city of Boise and its leaders to help us fulfill that pledge. Thank you for the opportunity to speak. I'd be happy to answer any questions if you have them.
Thank you, Gary. I've got one just not, you don't need to answer it tonight, but we think about, so when we moving forward, we've often every year we've grappled with how we engage more people in the budget process. And so last year when we met, um, the library folks, it was at the library, we had a session. We wanted to have the public come for town hall to talk about the budget. It's really important to me that we engage folks, you know, and the, the crowd was so, so I'd say there was more staff, not so, so in like, we didn't like them, but like in terms of numbers, right? So there are more staff than there were members of the public. And but you know, as you bring up a neighborhood association, I'd love it if you think about it. Um, and then share comments with my office or with our energized program and pull in other neighborhoods on how you think we could improve the engagement process in the future, because there, there are ways for us to engage neighborhoods and residents effectively in well in advance of this first hearing and always looking for better ways to do it.
I agree. I, I want to say a big appreciation to Nicole Carr, Boise's Energize New Program Manager. And we have some, she has developed and the city has developed some upcoming workshops. And we, we plan on being there and taking advantage of that. And we're very thankful for the program. And you know, I, we're a new neighborhood association. This is new to me and to many of us. And just tonight's experience tells me, okay, find out when the train leaves the station, get there plenty early and start and you'll be hearing us from us more and more.
Great.
Thank you.
Thank you. Yeah. Just keep in the back of your head. Cause it's always welcome for feedback.
Madam Mayor, Gary, thanks for your comments. Um, we have the benefit of having City Hall West in West Boise and the police and there. But I know it's a concern to you because you are a neighborhood watch person and you are making sure that the community is always looking out for any signs of crime. Could you talk a little bit about your experience doing that and why patrol officers are so important? Particularly like with gangs.
Talk to that in the context, we, we've on our website have established for our Centennial Neighborhood Association, a website that I'm hoping will provide a community feeling. And a neighborhood association has to feel like a community first before it can be effective. We've paid, paid special attention to establishing a separate pages on that website with rolling blogs to mirror all the information we get from neighborhood watch and mirror all the suggestions and bulletins that come out from BPD. And I, as a neighborhood watch captain, it's, it's hard. I mean, just recently, I, I will say we got some, we got some gang graffiti half a block from my house. We don't have that out there. So we jumped on that. We jumped on that. We said, look, they're marking Centennial Neighborhood, they're marking my neighborhood as gang property. I called BPD and that afternoon I had an officer come out, look at it, tell us what he thought the origination of that gang graffiti was. And he said it was Mexican Norte North. It wasn't good because all of a sudden we're starting to see things come into what are quiet, peaceful neighborhoods. So on our website, we highlight that. We tell people here, we said, put our Facebook page, our website, our next door, we put pictures out and said, watch out, we are not gang territory. And one of the ways you keep that out is you provide a sense of community for each neighborhood. And once people are proud of their neighborhood, they'll stand up and they'll say, I'm not gonna stand for that. I'll get ahold of my contact officer who's been very good, Matt Jacobs. We're very pleased with responses. We've gotten, I don't know if that answers your question.
Yeah. One more, Madam Mayor. Uh, Gary, Centennially is a, Centennial is a new neighborhood association and one, one of the things about the dynamic of the neighborhood association is that you are the west of the west. You know, so like you're on the border of Eagle, you're on the border of Meridian. And when you've gone around and talked to people about the new neighborhood association and their concerns, what are they saying about the library in, in particular? Cause I know that you've been part of that effort.
When we talk to people about the library, again, you know, it's really hard. If I said they're gonna put a, a feedlot in at McMillan and Cloverdale, I would have a thousand people, you'd have a thousand people here. When you tell people something good, it's hard. They, they just, oh, well, it's something good. I want that. So that's why we need to, to get people and get them involved and get them to realize that if you communicate with your neighborhood association and your neighborhood association communicates with your city leaders, good things happen. If you sit back and just assume things are gonna happen and only rise up when they're perceived bad things happening, that's not the way it operates. I don't think that's why neighborhood associations were established in the first place. City council wanted feedback, geological, neighborhood centric feedback. Not just of all the bad things we've heard in the last couple of years, but the good things as well. So we're hoping to serve that purpose.
Neil? Thank you.
Thank you.
So now I've got, is it, I think it's Carrie Ice? Larry Ice, so sorry. My next, I was, then I was about to say Kathy, but sorry about that, Larry.
That's okay. Poor handwriting.
Oh, mine's worse. I can't even read my own writing.
Madam Mayor, council members, uh, appreciate the time tonight. I'm gonna reiterate something Gary just said, uh, McDevitt Park. I just want to bring it to the top of your mind. Let it stand out a little bit. Uh, the reason we're concerned about it is, uh, McDevitt Park was annexed back in 1999. Most of it was finished in 2001. About eight acres, seven and a half acres, about 20% of it is bare dirt, weeds, clump grass and abandoned infrastructure. It's unsightly. It's not usable. It could even be a safety hazard. The reason I'm bringing it up during the budget process is because, uh, when I started inquiring about this a couple of years ago, I learned there was budget money available for it. It just hasn't been happening because of capacity issues. They've tried to do this a couple of times in 2013, the master plan called for lacrosse fields. That deal kind of fell through, I guess the, uh, lacrosse league didn't come through on what they wanted to do, but it sat for another 10 years until last year. When speaking with Parks and Recreation, they tell me that installation costs have gone up 40% and since 2021. Uh, it's about a hundred thousand dollars an acre just for turf and irrigation. We're talking about a seven and a half acres or almost $800,000 if we only just put grass in that area. My concern is that we need to make it top of mind with parks and recreation. So when they look at that budget money, they actually think we need to get this done this year. The 1.2 million that they've got budgeted for, to finish, uh, McDevitt is worth less and less every year. And that's why I'm concerned about it. That's why I'm kind of bringing it up at the budget meeting. It's not to ask for more money. But maybe if, uh, you talk to Director Holloway, just kind of move it up his list a little bit. I just want you to think about it if you would. That's about it.
Thank you.
Madam Mayor, can we, I don't see Doug here. Can Eric put that as a note to answer where that is in the project plan? Okay, thank you.
All right, the list, sorry. Kathy Corliss. Oh, Eric, you're here. If you've got the answer, you're welcome to give it.
Thank you very much, Madam Mayor. Councilor Wells, uh, I'm being told that we have that within our fiscal year 2025 plan. And I believe that that, that funding is dependent upon the collection of development impact fees. So every year when we develop our capital improvement plan, we look at receipts within our, our, our development impact fee fund. And we account for receipts within, uh, park planning areas. So we would be looking at the receipts within that park planning area. But presently within our development impact fee plan, it is in fiscal year 2025.
So next year's budget?
Yep.
Okay.
Madam Mayor, Eric, does that mean that the work would be done in 2025 or the beginning of the planning period? In other words, can we get a plan put in for this fiscal year so we can spend that money before it evaporates with inflation?
Uh, Madam Mayor, council member, I think I'd, I'd have to return with a little bit more information as to timing. Typically there is a, you know, there is a planning period where they see public input and things of that nature. Um, I will have to look, uh, and speak with our, our Parks and Recreation Department to see they develop, but available balance within that particular fund, whether fiscal year 2025 is going to be feasible based on the collections we're seeing to date. Uh, but I can come back with that information at a subsequent, uh, meeting.
So, um, Eric, clarification then on that, because there are other areas where parks are dependent on the, the receipt of impact fees as well. So when we say it's in the fiscal year 2025 budget, does that mean there's an expectation from the impact fee committee and the collection of impact fees that that $1.5 million or what the number was, um, will have been collected within that year? Or is it projected that we will spend that and then pay back with impact fees as they were received?
Madam Mayor, council member, uh, a little bit of both. So, um, generally within our development impact fee plan, expenditures are dependent upon the collection of, of revenues. There have been isolated incidents where we will advance funding, uh, for instance, Northwest Fire Station, whereby we will be collecting, uh, over a period of years to recoup that cost. We generally, as, as I said, we generally do, uh, receive the funds in advance. There are opportunities and we continue, continue to explore opportunities to advance, uh, funds. I, without having the plan in front of me right now, uh, I know that there are other projects within that park planning area as well. Our development impact fee plan is set over a 10 year period. When we, when we tentatively plan for a project, it is based on anticipated collections at that point in time when the plan was developed. However, we are seeing, uh, you know, trend information within our development impact fee accounts that we're seeing less growth and we're seeing over the last several months, uh, less receipts. So any projects that we, uh, bring forward as part of the annual budget cycle will be dependent upon receipts within any particular part planning area, um, as well as any opportunities to advance funding.
Kathy Corliss.
Good evening. Thank you, Mayor. Thank you, City Council for allowing this opportunity to speak and to comment on the budget. Um, as I look through the budget, there are just a couple of items, um, I wanted to note that maybe neat could be looked at for some reconsideration. First is in regards to our, excuse me, the 1.2 million for fiscal year 24 property tax rebate to the city or to taxpayers. Kind of the city circuit breaker program. As we saw in fiscal 23, our housing, the housing value significantly increased, and I think it allowed for this type of program to be very necessary for taxpayers. I think this year is very different from fiscal 23. We have our, our assessed values are much lower. The city is taking 2%, which is less of a burden on the city than a 3% would be. Our appraisals are about 12.8% lower and we're estimating that our property tax are actually gonna be quite significantly reduced that burden this year. So it seems like for these, this program benefits those who have a home, right? These are homeowners and that our homeowners are gonna be, have quite a bit of benefit this year from a reduced value in the property tax and likely the property tax burden is gonna be lower. So what I'd say is look at this consideration, consider using this 1.2 million for our housing program, right? And look to acquire new, lower cost housing for our vulnerable. A program that would benefit those that aren't current homeowners. In addition, uh, the other homeowners, there is still a circuit breaker program that exists that they can apply for. So that's one area I think that the council may look at for reconsiderations to reallocate that 1.2 million to a different type of housing program that would benefit city residents. Second is to take a look at where we're looking at for new staffing. There is quite a bit of new staffing in this budget. This is a time where we're at a very tipping point, I think, in our economy. We're seeing been on this tip of a recession for quite a while and staffing new positions can, can be problematic. Um, so I think it is worthy of a relook into those new staffing positions. One area I do think we are lacking is for police patrol. As we mentioned before, we're seeing a lot of crime, increase in crime. There was a new public service announcement that came out from federal and Canyon County for violent crime increase. And this causes many residents like myself, uh, and yourselves, I know a lot of concern. And as was mentioned before, in our neighborhoods, we're seeing crime that we haven't seen before. As the gentleman before, we're seeing graffiti in our neighborhood that we've never seen before. We're seeing not only car break, an increase in car break-ins, but also an increase in car thefts that we haven't seen before. So taking a look at some of these positions, I, I, I think about the core and I'd asked to consider some positions being reallocated for Boise Police Patrol.
Thank you.
Madam Mayor, I believe you were gonna maybe say a third point. Do you want to have a chance to do that?
Um, well, there were some specific positions I was gonna comment on, but. Well, there were some specific positions I was going to comment on, but I can, I can hold on.
What's one of the other positions you were going to comment on?
Well, I think some positions we have in the budget are nice to have, like an art project director at the airport or early childhood development at Boise Parks and Rec. I think these are great programs. But I think those positions would be better served for the safety of citizens in Boise.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, thanks.
Madam Mayor?
Yeah.
Just wanted to clarify or add, because I think you might have accidentally misspoke, but the Boise, city Boise crime is down 9.4% last year. Ada County is also down, but Canyon County is up. And I just wanted to make sure, because I think you might have misspoke.
Well, I think it depends on what numbers you're looking at. And the numbers that I see online were from, from '21. So we're a couple of years removed and we've had quite a bit of population increase since then. So I don't have the numbers. I'm not going to speak to them. But from what we're, what I'm physically seeing in our neighborhoods is it's not an increase.
I see. Sorry, I thought you were referencing the report that came out this week. So sorry about that. Thank you.
All right, next up, Amanda Salisbury.
Hi, good evening. My name is Amanda Salisbury and I'm married to Mark. But we live in West Boise by Eagle and McMillan, and we've lived there for 14 years. We have five kids between the ages of three and 12. And as long as I've lived in West Boise, not having a library nearby is something that I have noticed. And I've just kind of always felt like, oh, we're an afterthought to the city because we're out on the edges away from downtown. We're by Meridian, we're by Eagle. So I've always thought, oh, nobody wants to focus on the edges of everything. But my kids and I enjoy reading. My two oldest are voracious readers. Like I had to pry my Kindle, my daughter's Kindle out of her hands today to get her to do something else. And my two youngest kids have speech delays. I would love to be able to take my kids to the library more frequently to help grow their language, their love of learning and exploring, and to be able to participate more in classes and programs and to feel more part of the bigger community. But sadly for us, this doesn't happen a lot unless going to the library is part of another outing that we're doing anyway. Because going to the library for us feels like a big outing because of the distance it takes us to get to there, to a library. When we do go to a library, we'll either go to Eagle or it's Garden City or now the new Meridian branch, which I'm glad we can do, but I hardly ever go to a Boise library because it's not convenient. And all these libraries, Garden City, Meridian, and Eagle are all four or five miles away, as is the Cole and Ustick branch from us. Whereas a lot of people in the city can get to a library within two miles. And also, I, while I was looking at things in our library desert in our hole, there are three elementary schools there that are Title I schools. So there is socio-economic diversity in our area. And I think that we should be, we should be ensuring that everybody, including those that maybe aren't as well off, have the opportunities and community resources that the library can offer. As you guys all know, I'm sure, the city's vision is to create a community for everyone. And the mayor and her State of the City address this year talked a lot, sorry, talked a lot about that. She mentioned that being close to good things in life, like parks and libraries, strengthen the foundation and stability of our homes and in turn our communities. Said that investing in neighborhoods strengthens our city and keeps us safer. So just like the mayor has the goal of having a park within a 10-minute walk for everybody, I think it's a reasonable goal to have a library within a reasonable, maybe bikeable distance for everybody. So I am asking you guys to recognize the void of the library in West Boise and to make it a priority to help our community to be stronger and to help us be more closely connected to the city and the community.
I don't have anybody else signed up, but I know that, I imagine you're here to speak. Come on up, Kay. And then, sir, in the hat, you'll be next. And then anybody else? Are you planning on talking? You both are. Great, perfect.
Good evening. I'm Kay Hummel. I live at 420 East Crestline Drive in Boise Heights Neighborhood. I am testifying as an individual.
Is this on? I feel like I can hear you more directly than in the mic, so I just want to make sure for the record you're in there. Try again.
Kay Hummel, 420 East Crestline Drive?
Yeah, I just think you need to be a little closer to it.
Okay, can do that.
Yeah.
Thanks.
Yeah.
Um, my neighborhood talked to planning and zoning on the code rewrite. We gave seven pages of detail. When it came time to talk to you on your chance at the code rewrite, we focused only on one thing. Jeff Faraday spoke to you about infrastructure needing to go in at the outset of projects. I'm bringing up another part, and the paper you have is just two pages out of seven we gave PNC in April. And I've gone through my notes and seen that I was talking to the planning department about this in '20 and '21 as we got ready to do zoning code. But why I'm here for the budget is it's not new to me. I've commented many times over the years, in the pandemic year, I supported your police budget. And we all know the two most important things that our tax dollars and other revenues go to are public safety, fire and police. And in my neighborhood and for me personally, those are really important things. And I don't mind paying my taxes. I want to compliment Eric and all the staff for devising a great budget document and all the work that goes into it. And I appreciate that you're only taking the 2% rather than the 3%. But I would like to see a couple more FTEs in code enforcement. That's what this is about. I've looked through what you're doing for fire, for planning and development services, and in finance and administration where code enforcement currently is lodged. Finance is getting, under this proposal, 2.45 new FTEs, fire, three new employees. None of them are in fire prevention, I noted. And planning and development is asking for two new employees to deal with the new zoning modern code. And that's really good. It needs to happen. I support that. What I would like to see is zoning, is code enforcement have some specialists and at least one or two of them be lodged at planning and zoning and development services and that they be specialists in soil restoration, in weeds, in drainage. Our neighborhood has had many problems with adequate, timely code enforcement. And I'll give you a couple of quick examples. In 2007, on July 27th, I and my two teenage sons put out a fire that happened on the empty lot next to us where I and the neighbor above had been trying to get the weeds abated for six weeks. They were taller than I stood the day before and finally got mowed down. The next day, a power line snapped, started a fire that grew to a 30-foot diameter. If the weeds had not been cut down, my elderly neighbor above would have caught on fire and possibly my home would have. May I continue briefly? In 2021, I started talking to most of the council about this. Two of you were not here then. But Councilman Willetts, you brought up.
Kay, I do need you to be brief.
Caught, brought up the tipping point issue. Where we're at is tipping point with climate change. It's getting hotter. All the foothills neighborhoods and out in Columbia Village adjacent to the desert have high fire risk and abatement issues that do not get handled in a timely manner. I'd love to see you add another FTE or two to deal with this in a timely way. The other side of my handout also addresses what the procedure has typically been for us. So thank you very much for considering that and thank you for the hard work you do. And I'm happy to answer questions.
Thanks. You might have a couple. Anybody?
Madam Mayor, maybe just for clarification, you're not only asking for additional positions in code compliance, you think that they need to be more specialized related to development and not things like parking or other areas? Is that correct?
That's correct. I noticed that in finance and admin, you're getting, requesting two that will deal with parking issues, which is valid. There's a lot the city has going on there. And the .45 FTE is a grants compliance analyst. So there's nothing to do with out there in the hinterlands. You also have code compliance that goes on with right pairing and issues. So this person could be more than just weeds. They could do a lot of good.
Perfect, thank you.
Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Madam Mayor?
The gentleman go with the hat. Did I scare him away when I said he was next? Oh, gotcha.
Um, well, he's feeding the meter. I'm curious from Eric, how many people work in code compliance within the finance department? Is that, did I ask you something you don't know? Because you always know.
Oh, we've got Linda here, and I think she just did eight fingers or something.
Is that seven? Eight? Okay, thank you.
All right, well, you can come on up. And will you please just enter your, after you're done, just enter your names on a piece of paper so we've got it?
Yeah, I signed up online earlier, so I'm sorry.
That's fine. That's okay. I'd already, we'd already brought this in when you came in.
Okay. Mayor McLean, President Woodings and members of the City Council. My name is Jennifer Fror. I live at 5274 North Candlestick Avenue in Boise. I'm blessed to be a mom of five amazing daughters. They all love libraries for different reasons. My oldest is an avid reader, so she loves checking out new books. We put her favorite series on hold and have them sent to the Orchard Park Library. The second loved her kindergarten readiness program that she did at the Garden City Library and still says hi to Ms. Amanda whenever we go there. The next two love playing with educational toys and doing music and movement at the Eagle Library or the Silverstone Library in Meridian. In all the years I've been taking my kids to libraries around town, we have only been to Boise libraries a handful of times because of the distance to get there. As I've had more children and time and gas become more precious commodities, even traveling 15 minutes to a library, and yes, it takes 15 minutes by car to get to any of the surrounding libraries, is difficult. Our weekly library trips have turned into monthly library trips, if that. I believe a library within two miles of my house would greatly benefit children like mine who would more regularly be able to use the amazing programs that libraries have to offer. The library capital fund includes a line item for a strategic plan, a library facilities plan and staffing assessment. As I listened to the library board meeting, I was informed that the facilities portion of the plan is to look for a gap in the services area. How is the city growing? Where is the library delivering services? And how can the library best deliver services for the next 20 years? We have shown that map that you saw earlier to people at events and going door to door. When we ask people where they think the next library branch should be built, everyone points out the lack of library coverage in West Boise. Do we need to wait for a study to be completed to take action? Maybe we still need $3,000, $300,000 to set out a strategic plan. But I would argue that the work to find the gap in services has already been done by Mark Salisbury. This study feels like just another government step when the gap is obvious. I'd like to propose that the library budget use some of this money to take steps toward providing a library for the citizens of West Boise now. Over a year ago, my friend Mark challenged the city to put some of the budget toward buying land or researching a spot for a library in West Boise. If we continue to wait, I believe the city will slowly run out of options. I'm asking that you use the fiscal year 24 budget to prioritize providing better access to libraries for children like mine, children who love and learn in libraries.
Is your daughter testifying also? Great, come on up. Drop the mic as low as you can.
Mayor McLean and City Council. My name is Molly Fror and I live in West Boise. I love the library. I want a nearby library so I can read more books. My younger sisters, ages zero, two, four and six, all want a library too. They, like all of the stuff a library has, including books, toys and activities, I checked out a lot of books and in approximately one week, I read all of these library books. I'd love to be able to walk or bike to a library so I could check out books more often. Please build a library in West Boise. Thank you.
Thank you.
Madam Mayor, I have a question. What's your favorite book?
Um, Keeper of the Lost Cities.
I'll put that on my list. Thank you.
All right, sir, you are up. Yep. I thought maybe I scared you away when I said you were up next time. I went to call on you, you disappeared.
Madam Mayor, council members, my name is Joe Leguio. I live in West Boise on Guinness Drive. And thank you. I had to disappear and go feed the parking meter. My civic duty to keep the parking meters fed in front of City Hall. I simply wanted to step up here for a moment and just offer a couple of things. It wasn't my intent to actually give testimony tonight, but I, I live in what you call the northwestmost corner of Boise. And there's a little community there of, called Bristol Heights, 544 homes. That's literally the corner. To our west, we have Meridian. To our north, across the street on Schinon Boulevard, we have Eagle. And then we're your little corner up there. And it's a great place to be. That is West Boise and we're part of the Centennial Neighborhood Association. I've served as the president of that community for the last five years. I want to say that I'm very, very proud of Mark Salisbury and Amanda for bringing forth this initiative on the library, which there seems to be an awful lot of support of. Anecdotally, I'll share a quick story. Probably about two years ago, there was a lot of communication within our community, but hey, can we put up a, some sort of a little lending library next to our private park there in Tapestry Park on Bristol Heights Drive? And, and it just sort of, and it happened. And one gentleman went to work in his shop and his, in his garage, and he built this nice little lending library with a nice little plexiglass opening and it houses probably about 30, 40, 50 books. And they constantly get exchanged and the kids read them and they come back. And so that is our library right now, up in the northwest corner of Boise. To the south, we have McDevitt Park. Austin Creek is one of the neighborhood associations. Lowell Parks right across, or excuse me, Lowell Middle Schools right across the street from McDevitt Park. So you get a pretty good, I wish I'd brought graphics for you, but a pretty good idea of where, of where we're at. Certainly, as a member of the Centennial Neighborhood Association, we support anything you can do for us up in that sector of the woods. I'd also like to mention that it's been a very challenging last 30 days for this council. We know that. And we're proud of you. You've done a heck of a job and you've dealt with some pretty tough issues. We are one of many neighborhood associations in your, in your, in your city. And we're proud to be here and be able to speak before you tonight. Obviously, not a people showed up necessarily for the budget meeting, but we thank you for everything you do. Bottom line, thank you for everything and I'm sure we'll be back and speaking to you in the future.
I hope you'll be at the neighborhood and interactive with us this weekend.
I'm sorry, one more.
Will you be at the neighborhood interactive with us this weekend?
On the 14th?
Whatever Saturday is.
Uh, yeah.
15th.
That's the 15th. I better be, huh?
You better be. You'll have to feed the meter on Saturday too, so I recommend using a CCDC garage. It's cheaper.
Copy that. Thank you so much. If there's any questions.
Yeah, I do have a question. You're the second person who's brought up McDevitt Park. And we got quite a few comments about that online through the survey and stuff as well. I love that park because it's got a skate park and I wish that every single park had a skate park because that's what I wanted more than anything growing up. I guess I'm kind of curious, in that part of town, you've got a variety of different parks. You've got some new parks that are coming soon. There seems to be a desire to develop the remaining aspect of this park. And I guess I'm trying to figure out if I lived in this area and I was prioritizing. And I guess I'm trying to figure out if I lived in this area and I was prioritizing what I wanted to see. Would I be prioritizing the development of the remaining parts of a pretty, what I would consider a really cool park with some great features in it? Um, or would I be looking at some other parks that may need further amenities? Or enhanced shamrock development? Or, you know, when we're looking at some of our other parks that are in the area, like how am I as a neighborhood prioritizing what I want? And is it McDevitt Park? Is that really the one in your area of town that you think needs the most work? Um, and would rise to the top of your priority list?
And I couch that too in the 10 minute walk to a park goal. So I mean, that's one of the things we're trying to look at. Um, and it does mean that the investments will, many of the investments will be made in West Boise, South Boise, Southeast Boise. Is that 10 minute walk to a park? And so I think that's part of what you're getting at too, like.
Yeah, I'm trying to figure out like where in your neighborhood, like in your, you want that 10 minute walk to a park. You want parks to have really great amenities. There's a park in, in East Boise that desperately wants to have a playground. Desperately wants to have a playground. You've got one in McDevitt Park. So again, I'm trying to figure out like, is McDevitt Park the spot where if I lived in that part of town, where I would want to see the investment in parks funds? Or are there some other areas, whether it's a new park that helps with that 10 minute walk? Or some existing areas that could be enhanced? And I would just love to have your perspective.
Madam Mayor, Councilmember Halliburton. You, we could spend 30 minutes about this. Um, and, and I won't answer the question for the entire community because I can't speak for everybody in terms of how they feel. I can tell you this much, within Bristol Heights, we have five private parks. Being on the board, I know that each one of them is worth about $80,000. We spend and we budget for about $300,000 replacement of these playgrounds over the course of time. Do we need more playgrounds in our particular corner? Perhaps not. I moved into that community in 2020 some years ago and that has been a piece of dirt for the entire time. What can we do with it? I think we have an opportunity and maybe that's why you see so, so many folks from Centennial, or at least that northwest corner of Boise are here tonight, is that we want to engage with you. We want to work with the Parks and Recreation. We want to work with all of those authorities that are going to have decision-making process on what we do there and complete it. And we can do some pretty cool things. This isn't a, you know, us against them kind of a thing. This is what can we do as what you want to be as a city and as a community? And we're here to, to work with you on it. What we do there, I don't know for sure. Now people are talking about a library. People are talking about expanding it. The skate park is awesome. Kids like to ride bicycles. There's an awful lot of Little League space there that goes unused for a large pieces a year. We don't need more of that, but maybe we do. I don't know. I can't speak for everybody.
Sure. And I appreciate that. You know, I guess what I would encourage the folks from this part of town and the neighborhood association that spoke earlier is our Parks and Rec Department has a thousand projects that they need to do.
Yes, sir.
Um, a lot of maintenance, a lot of new, new amenities that a lot of people want to have. And really what happens is there's a prioritization list of like what needs it the soonest, what's the highest priority for the city? Where's it going to solve this 10 minute walk need? And so it's helpful, I think, when neighborhoods can help us identify what their highest priorities are. And is it the existing park that's there and, and you know, filling that, that dirt spot? I think there used to be a bar there. Yeah. My dad used to play softball and we would go to the bar afterwards. And when, back in the eighties, you didn't have to be 21 to go in with your parents. But it's nice to know what your, your neighborhood's priorities are. So that we can bring those back to Parks and Rec and the Parks and Rec Commission to really know like, what do we need to do first? And so I would be really curious to know that in the future. I don't think that there's going to be an answer tonight. But that would be something I would encourage you to bring forward as a neighborhood association with the conversations going forward.
It would be our privilege and honor to do so. And I can assure you that at least those of us that are the members now, larger members of the Centennial Neighborhood Association will in fact do exactly that for you.
Thank you.
So thank you for the opportunity.
Madam Mayor, I have a question. Joe, remind me of your position on the Centennial Neighborhood.
I'm the Secretary of the Centennial Neighborhood Association.
And you mentioned Charles McDevitt Park and, and I think Gary has some history, maybe Larry on this. You know, it's been barren for 20 years and is it your understanding that the money that was set aside was there long ago? I mean, I, I'd just like some clarity on the Neighborhood Association's perspective on that.
Larry Ice would be better to address that than I. However, I know that roughly 1.2 million was in fact, if I understand correctly, set aside some time ago and it's sort of been earmarked. Now, what point two will buy these days? I don't know. But that is roughly my understanding unless I stand corrected by Larry Ice.
Well, and I'd just say that Eric answered that quite, oh, and we've got staff that can answer that too, um, when it was programmed.
Hi, Madam Mayor, Councilmembers. My name is Karen Bledsoe. I work for Parks and Recreation. So I just want to let you know, we did have a budget of 1.2 million in FY23. However, we need to update our master plan. So starting in October, we plan on working on our master plan for Charles McDevitt Park. And then in FY25, we move the budget there. So we have 24 to develop a new master plan and then we have funding that has been moved to FY25 to get that section.
So within this budget, the planning is taking place in FY24?
Correct.
And then the funds, the one point?
It, it, we moved, it was 1.2 million in FY23 and we're predicting probably over 1.4 million in 25.
Great. Okay. Okay. Thanks for being here. I didn't realize that you were here earlier.
Thank you.
Was not our objective to commandeer the budget meeting with discussion about this, but thank you so much, all of you for the opportunity.
Thanks. Anyone else? All right. Anybody online? Eric? You're walking up. Is it, you had things to say?
Have we closed the public hearing then? Did I hear that?
No, I haven't. I haven't said that yet. Do you have questions?
I have questions for Director Door.
Sure. Come on up. Jessica.
Jessica, it's Director Door. It's your dream. People want libraries. Like this is fantastic. Um, I have some clarifying questions and maybe Eric has a cheap book here on page 144, which talks about the library strategic plan and the 300,000 that's allocated to that at the capital fund. And I need some clarity because it talks about basically executing on the comprehensive plan that's already happened and then moving towards facilities. Can you give us more detail on what that 300,000 will go towards? And what role facility planning will play in that in terms of library coverage?
Uh, Madam Mayor, Councilmember Willetts, uh, thank you for the question. And yes, this is wonderful to have so many library supporters here today. And to hear stories of what libraries mean for people personally in Boise. And it just is, it really makes me as a library director and my staff just so happy to see so much support in the community. Um, I want to talk about the question about sort of where we are. Um, and particularly want to start with the, when I joined the city and when the Board of Trustees hired me, what they asked me to do, uh, coming out of the failed main library project, the ending of the current, both the current strategic plan for the library as well as the.
Ending meaning the.
Oh, the timeframe.
Right. It had been a 20-year plan and we're at year 20.
Yes. Thank you. Um, thank you, Mayor, for the clarification. The Boise Public Library is governed by the Board of Trustees, which oversees strategic direction for the library, facilities, budget, um, and then, uh, the executive director of the library. And at that time, when I was hired, both the strategic plan for the library had ended in terms of its timeframe as well as the facilities plan, which was from 2000 to 2020. Um, and really was what built the neighborhood branches. Um, when that facilities plan was created in 2000, uh, Boise Public Library only had a downtown location and one small storefront in Boise Town Square. And so that was the facilities plan that actually created, that created the four locations, uh, the four additional locations that we have today. So Col and Eustick, Bound Crossing, Hillcrest and Collister. Um, so coming into that, the Board of Trustees really wanted to make sure that we did the work first to understand, again, coming out of COVID, wow, there's been so many changes in library services, so many changes in how the community is using libraries, what technology is available and really wanted to have, particularly after the failed main library project, a conversation with the community about what the community wanted to see in the programs and services as a starting point for then moving into a longer-term facilities plan. So the work that we did last year, the strategic plan that was just approved by the Board of Trustees last month, that is that short-term, you know, five-year strategic plan, really focused on what we want to see in how people want to use the library now. One of the things that we found, and I remember when I came to talk to you about some of the key findings from that strategic plan, was how invested the community is in having a conversation about facility planning, about equitable access. And so one of the things that you, two of the things that I think are most important in our FY24 budget request are one, is the money for the longer-term facility planning? That 20-year projected look at what are the facilities we have now? Where is there a potential gap currently? And then projected, you know, with the passage of the Modern Zoning Code, we're going to see shifts in our population. So that work is in a really good spot because we had a key finding, you know, key finding number nine. If you can't remember all 12 of them, I won't quiz you, but that, that the, the community really values that physical facility in addition to, you know, we also want to see a continued website. We want to see, you know, e-audiobooks. We want that convenience. So one of the things the board and I've been really talking about is how do we balance, you know, all the different potential priorities? And then how do we think about building capacity over time? Particularly when we're looking at facilities planning, we'll need to look at locations, but we need a comprehensive system view that also includes how do we fund staff? How do we fund technology? What are the right materials, collection sizes? Um, you know, meeting spaces, all the different pieces that go onto it. So we're very well positioned for it, both with the funding for the facilities plan, but then also our data analyst request, because that will be the piece that will allow us to do that work ongoing. So that as we continue to track usage, both physically, virtually and in the community, having instead of sort of the one-time lack of the ability to really increase our ability to know what the community wants and respond faster.
Madam Mayor, follow up. Thank you, Director. That is really helpful to give us the big picture. So in terms of the funding, the 300,000, will that fund a study that will do these things so that we'll have a plan, a potential plan for equitable services throughout the city? Or is that, I, I need clarification. What is that 300,000 getting us?
Madam Mayor, Councilmember Willetts, yes. So with the approval of that money for the long-term facilities plan, first thing that I will, will do was meet with the Board of Trustees and really finalize what that scope will look like. So that we're making sure that we've got clear expectations of deliverables from the Board of Trustees and then as well as getting community input and input from council. Um, I think it's really important to make sure at the beginning that we, when we, when we know we've got the resources that the, then we look at what that scope is. And like I said, it needs to include facilities as well as what is the right staffing model? What is the right technology needs? Uh, what are the right collection sizes? All those pieces really are what's important in terms of looking at, you know, what are all the resources that a library needs? And then I think it'll look similar to the, uh, recommendation that came 20 years ago that actually had scenarios, um, that, that were available for the board, the community and council to consider in terms of, okay, here's different options for how the library might grow. And here are different investment opportunities and different trade-offs. Well, and in, when you think about budgeting, we, we know we'll have to make choices that are informed, that meet as our community's expectations, um, but also have the funding for them long-term.
So do you, um, so do you foresee that we will have that sort of scenario building by the end of, you know, at this time next year where we can actually have a substantive discussion?
Uh, Council, Madam Mayor, Councilmember Willetts, at this point, I have not had the conversation with the Board of Trustees about the scope and what that timing looks like. But I assure you, they have a same sense of urgency in wanting to move forward, particularly having done, you know, such a robust strategic planning process with the community and seeing how much interest and investment is. So I will continue to work with the Board of Trustees on this and obviously update you as we move forward.
Thank you. That's great to hear. I think, um, I think there's wisdom, obviously, in doing a citywide plan to make sure that there's, you know, equitable services and equitable locations throughout the city, including West Boise. My concern is we get to the end of this 300,000 and then we have another study and it costs us more money. And we just keep pushing this down when there's an urgent need right now. And so obviously I know that there's still some work to do, but I want to put that on the record that we need a plan as soon as possible for how we're going to do these services throughout the city and what that means for locations.
Thank you.
Ben Mary, um, I'm going to try to maybe see if I can provide a little bit of clarification from my understanding, but I'll certainly need your help, Director Door, um, since you're the expert and you've been in the room for all these meetings. I'm the council liaison for, um, for the library. And we went through a really large strategic planning process, a ton of community outreach. And the community really told us, these are the programs that we value. These are the types of things that we want to have from the library. And this is how, um, this is what we want to see from the library going forward. And so my understanding is that we're now sort of taking that strategic plan and saying, okay, the community told us the type of programming that we want. And now we have to figure out how we're going to deliver it, um, to the community. And there's sort of a variety of different ways that we can deliver it. You know, one can be online, you know, people can get access anywhere they want. You know, another way is, um, is a expanding capacity in our existing facilities. Um, and then another way of doing it is actually expanding, you know, locations, a variety of different ways. And so we know that there's different methods of bringing, different methods of bringing this program to the community. And I think that that's sort of where we're at with the facilities plan, is trying to figure out now, how do we take the, the vocalized needs that was expressed for programming and actually deliver it both geographically and virtually? Is that kind of accurate?
Uh, Madam Mayor, Councilmember Halliburton, I think that's exactly right. The, the discussions that we're having and you've been in some of these, is the, particularly the balance between the physical and the virtual. And that was one of the things that was really interesting, reading the, the facilities plan that was written in the year 2000. It was written at this moment of time where, uh, public access technology was just starting to really be widespread in libraries. And there were no smartphones. There were really no, you know, there were no e-readers. There were no e-audiobooks. And that has really changed how people use our libraries. Uh, one of the things we saw from our community survey is that some of our most, some of our library users who use the library the most don't ever come into the building because they're using it through our website. They're using it through our apps. And so we want to be really thoughtful about thinking about what are the ways that we can serve the people that come into our buildings? But also how are we out in our community serving as well? And so I think when we are balancing, you know, how we prioritize, we really want to have a robust conversation about how people, how people's, you know, how their usage of libraries has stayed the same in how important it is for early literacy. And then also how we're seeing real interesting changes because of the fact that you can walk around with Boise Public Library in your pocket because it's in your phone. So we've got a, we've got a great opportunity to have a conversation about bringing the best of technology and the best of facilities for all of Boise residents.
And kind of going further with that, Madam Mayor, um, I think one of the things that we noticed was the physical space was important for people as well were, um, physical collections, especially when it came to younger people, physical collections for younger folks, which is basically like your inventory of books that you've got at the library, um, was extremely important and showed a really high level of value. And so when we do this facilities plan, um, and I know that we're still in the process of scoping that, you know, there's a number of things, you know, that it's probably looking towards. It's the expansion of digital access, but it's also probably what does the expansion of physical access look like? And that could be a variety of different things. Again, it could be investing in existing spaces. But we also have a picture of what libraries look like across our city. You know, we've got standalone libraries like Bound Crossing, very enhanced ones like we see on Eustick. And we've got some other ones that occupy space and, you know, if you're like your strip mall in, in Hillcrest or Collister, all that have different levels of cost. My guess at this point is that if you're going to try to build a standalone library like Bound Crossing, you're probably knocking on the door of $25 million, which adds a whole nother level of complexity. And so I think that with this facilities plan, it's a lot of money. I mean, but it, if you're actually going to be able to build these things and be strategic about it and know that some of these things actually might require citizen vote to go forward, it does take a. citizen vote to go forward, it does take a really robust planning process. And it seems like, I wish it was as easy as like, let's get some land and do this now. But if you're buying a piece of land and then building a standalone library, you might be hitting, you know, some of those dollar marks. And so I think that that's why this facilities plan is so important, is to make sure that we're doing these things in a very intentional way and figuring out like, what's the easiest, fastest? That's going to address some of these needs. What are the bigger things that are out there? Um, and what might actually require, you know, a, an actual vote? And that's some of the complexity that goes with this. And I just kind of want to highlight that a little bit more is that I don't know that we know exactly what the scope is, but we know that the scope is complex. Um, and it's gotten more complex with the, with the ballot initiative that's there. But there's also a lot of different options and varieties of ways that things can look. And I think that that's sort of what, from my understanding of this scoping process and the discussion is taking the strategic plan and kind of bringing in the complexity of both physical location and equitabilities spread throughout town. Um, and the different types of what those facilities might even look like to begin with.
Madam Mayor. Jessica, forgive me if you've already touched on this, but could you speak to the kind of lanes that council and the library board occupy as it relates to facilities? And decisions around facilities and funding of facilities?
Uh, Madam Mayor, Councilmember Nash, thank you for that question because it is, it, uh, speaking to Councilmember Hallie Burton about complexities, this is a, a complex and structure in that by statute, public libraries are governed by a Board of Trustees. The Boise Public Library Board of Trustees is five members. They are appointed by the mayor, confirmed by council, and they do oversee the budget so that they actually are reviewing all expenditures. They help prepare and they approve a budget that comes to council before you see it for final approval. They also oversee the strategic direction and they do oversee facilities. So for instance, if we have a closure, it's the board that approves that. When we had a staff appreciation day, we opened two hours late, um, so that we could celebrate staff, uh, in the spring. And so I needed to go to the board for approval to do that. So they are the ones that really do oversee the direction of the library. The library is funded, um, as Eric pointed out, um, you know, it's funded by the city. It's a city department. So council has final say on that. So for me, it is really important to make sure that I'm very clear about roles and responsibilities, but keeping both the city informed of the library board and the library board informed of the city. So one of the things that Eric does is he comes to the Board of Trustees meeting before budget kicks off so he can explain the process to the board. So that they know sort of how a, a city budget is built and their role in it, but then also, uh, city council's role in it as well. Did that answer your question? Okay, thank you.
Well, and one thing you point out that, um, you know, I often forget, even though it's silly to forget because I like to go to libraries to like what's inside them. But it's not just a building. It's, and this, this plan will be, will, will address that. And they'll be able to tell us with this plan, you know, what kind of thing we should walk through, whether it be a strip mall or building, but most importantly, what's in it? And what's, what's in, based on what we have in other places? And then importantly, how many people we need there to staff it? So there, there's all these different pieces that if I'm understanding you correctly, will be part of that ultimate plan to then help this council look at, from a capital improvement plan, just like we have with parks, look at the, the needs that it's identifying, the, the financial realities and mechanisms for how we make that happen. And then we ask the questions of, do you, do we need to go to, for bond? Does it hit twenty five million dollars and we need to go to, go to a vote? Um, and all those different pieces that become part of that planning process or implementation process based on the document that, um, you'll bring the board and the council.
Yeah, Madam Mayor, I think that's such a good point because I want to make sure that when, if we do come with any capital requests, it's very clear what it costs to operate that as well, you know? How many staff do we need based on size? How many staff do we need based on programming? Because, you know, they're coming out of the strategic planning process, we heard how important it is to have adequate staff so that when people walk into a building that they can be helped, that we can do some of the outreach, that we can work with community partners, we can work with our schools. And so being really thoughtful about making sure that we look at all of our assets and then are, are building a growth plan that really does incorporate, you know, with the things that people love about the libraries. They know the librarian's name. They know who did their story time. They know what their favorite books are, and those are all the pieces that need to be really brought in together. We've got great direction from the community with our strategic plan and what they want us to focus on. So coming out of that, having a clear goal of increasing access, making resources available. You know, we're going to be in a great spot, um, for the twenty four budget and having that next phase of work with the community.
Madam Mayor, if I could just add one more thing, I, I think what maybe I'm hearing from some of my fellow council members is that although the scope of the plan hasn't been defined one hundred percent yet, that there is a desire, I think, from council to see both geography and gaps in service included that. And that, and so I think that there, there's an express desire to, um, see that included in the scoping process is what I'm hearing.
Madam Mayor, one more quick question. Um, Jessica, I know you did so much and, and the folks at the library did a lot of public outreach. And that's where you got this great feedback about the need for facilities. Does this three hundred thousand dollars include money for outreach or that, is that part of the scope? That we can make sure that, that that continues?
Madam Mayor, Councilmember Willetts, absolutely. We, that is why we're so confident this is the right step is that we did the community engagement and we absolutely want to go back and do that again. And we anticipate that we'll have even more engagement because of the interest and because of the, the great people in the community that want to have a conversation with us about facilities.
All right. Thank you. Um, I just want to make sure, did anybody jump online? Great. And nobody new came in. Just, I want to flag one thing before we close and then we can all discuss. Graffiti came up a couple of times. The chief is here and I believe it's next week that there will be a presentation. So I want to flag that for the public. And we're proposing an ordinance to address the, what do you call it? The covering up of the abatement. That's right. I knew, I couldn't think of the official word, the abatement of graffiti, particularly on private property, which is um, an issue that we're running into in terms of, we can't go and cover it up the way we'd like to. So I've asked the police department to come and with some proposed rule changes and steps that we would take. And so, um, tune in, you can come in person if you want, or you can jump online and watch. And that'll be next Tuesday. Is it during work session? I mean, I'm getting a yes. So during the day, so look for the agenda and then you'll see the time. And with that, I'm going to go ahead and close the public hearing.
Madam Mayor.
Yes, um, I think your mic, is your mic on?
Yes. I have a motion to approve Resolution three twenty eight dash twenty three, a resolution reserving the right for the future recovery of foregone tax revenue from the twenty twenty four fiscal year in the amount of one million, seven hundred fifty one dollars. Or sorry, one million, seven hundred fifty one thousand, five hundred eighty eight dollars and providing an effective date.
Then a question for the motion maker. Are, are you moving down to the next item to get this one out of the way before the first one?
I'm sorry, it was told that that public hearing was for both the proposed budget and the foregone property tax.
So, oh, so you're just, you're, you're, you want to take care of that motion first? Great.
I'll second.
Motion and second discussion? I'll say on this one, this is, this is something that's required by law now that when we don't take the full increase in property tax, that we, um, take a separate motion on the foreground to set aside with the language that Eric had showed us in a slide earlier in the presentation. Clerk, we call the roll. Willetts?
Yes.
Weddings?
Yes.
Agent?
Yes.
Hallie Burton?
Yes.
Ash?
Yes.
All in favor, motion carries? So we aren't doing the, we're not doing this budget now? All right, now we're moving into the fee hearing.
Madam Mayor.
Appears that I missed a motion.
Yeah.
I thought you were saving it for last, like the grand finale.
I felt like there was a motion that I needed to make, so I asked legal and they left me hanging.
Your, your, one of your final acts is to throw them under the bus.
I'm just throwing legal under the bus. They threw me under the bus. All right. No one's under the bus. We're fine. All right. Madam Mayor, I move that we place the FY twenty twenty four budget ordinance on the first reading calendar scheduled for August fifteenth, twenty twenty three.
Second.
We have a motion and a second, and I'm going to open the floor for discussion.
Madam Mayor?
Yes.
Um, I appreciate everyone coming out tonight. And I think that there was a lot of really great, robust discussion that brings things to light for us because we can't be every single place at once. We don't know what is special to people about their community. And, um, I think that it also facilitated a really robust discussion about why we do parks planning, why we do facilities planning, because it creates more, more robust public discussion. It also creates more, um, dependability for our budget and makes it more predictable. And so these are all really important conversations and I hope that folks continue to be engaged as we develop a new master plan for McDevitt Park, as we develop a new facilities plan for our libraries so that we can ensure that equitability of access throughout our entire city because that's really important to us. We know it's important to you. And, um, it takes citizen engagement to make it all happen. So I really appreciate everyone coming out tonight.
Ben Mary.
I think, just one more thing, um, I appreciate all of the staff who has worked on this budget throughout many, many months, many, you know, meetings with your commissions and, um, your trustees. And I know that it takes, it's a lot of work because it's a lot of money. And we really feel a responsibility to be, um, to be responsible to our taxpayers and the people who are entrusting us to provide the services that they have come to depend on throughout the city. And I know that you all take that really seriously. We all take it really seriously. And, um, I just want you to know how much it's appreciated. Thank you.
Madam Mayor, I'm certainly supporting the motion. I, I seconded it. This is the, the fourth, uh, budget hearing that I've been a part of since I was a city council member. I always envisioned that these would be the busiest nights on city council. Um, and rarely are they, I mean, I think we had, you know, eight people the first year, maybe two the second, maybe zero or one, you know, last year. And so we, we don't always have a lot of engagement in these meetings. And it's, it's really great that you all decided to come out tonight and to make sure that you were both involved with the process leading into it and be here tonight as well. I would encourage you to continue to do, um, the same thing going forward. And I want to, you know, show my appreciation to all the folks who maybe weren't here tonight, but also offered input on the budget. We saw a lot of it, um, come on line. Um, and we saw some of it in, in, in our other outreach that we've done as well. And, you know, I kind of say this every single year, but like our budget is really sort of, um, a reflection of the city's values and things that we want to continue to bring forward. And it can be a snapshot sort of of the year to come. The snapshot can change, you know, and, and we've seen that, you know, in, in some years more, more so than others in twenty twenty, when you had this really great plan in place. Um, and then all of a sudden it changed really quickly. Um, and that could be from obstacles. It can be from really incredible opportunities where someone from the community comes forward with funding and all of a sudden we've got a new clubhouse at Warm Springs Golf Course. So you really don't know exactly what things are going to look like. But the values, I think, remain consistent, um, no matter how the actual, you know, challenges and opportunities arise. I, I think one of the things that's really important is we had a great presentation. It was very, very technical. Um, a lot of the things that we saw here, but there's so many other great things that are in the budget. There's, you know, twenty six point seven new positions to make sure that we're maintaining the work that we do around the community and the community expectations. And it's, it's really, really important. You know, people equal programs. And so if we want to have our services, if we want to have our parks looking good, if we want our librarians to be there to help check out books and run programs for families, like it has to have staff to go with it. Um, with our modern zoning code and, and the changes that might be there as well. And we need to make sure that we've got staff to support that. I think the one area that I, I just want to flag for us to pay attention to is with the, is with the modern zoning code. And are the additional staff people that we've, um, put in place for that going to be enough? And I think that that's something for us to pay attention to through code enforcement. I think that's something for us to pay attention through, through PDS. I think that as development changes, if we really see some of the density that we'd like to see in some specific areas, how that changes some of the other plans. And so I do think that even though twenty six, uh, employees is, is a lot, we need to keep an eye on that as the city grows and the, the rest of the county grows as well. Cause as somebody expressed earlier, we've got our city that grows, but it's all the people coming into our city and the services that are there as well. And our whole valley is just seeing a ton of growth. And so I, I guess I would just ask council members to continue to look at those positions and make sure that we are adequately staffed, especially with the modern zoning code, um, to kind of do some of these things that we want to see. But I think it's a great reflection of our city's values and things that are putting forward, um, and some really, really exciting things that, uh, that might pop up along the way as well. You know, when the community jumps in to help. So thank you.
Madam Mayor, I, I appreciate this budget and the work that went into it, particularly by Eric's team, but by everybody. It certainly reflects my understanding of what we need to do as a city in the next year. I'm really glad that we're taking less than three percent. We've seen the math from Eric. That's largely symbolic, frankly, based on how property assessments rise and fall, but the signal that it sends is that we're frugal with the public's money, which this mayor and council really are, they really are. And that's reflected in that three percent. I appreciate the FTEs and public safety and particularly police. We are one of the safest cities in the country. Crime has gone down in the last year, both within our city, within our county, and within the state of Idaho. But there is a tipping point that we've heard a lot about, um, that we need, you know, this is something to maintain. And you maintain it by investing in the type of infrastructure that allows community policing and neighborhood relationships and the kind of things that we heard about from you, sir. I appreciate the FTEs to implement the zoning code because, you know, it's two right now. Those people are going to have their work cut out for them because it's, it's a lot of work and it's going to affect how our city looks and feels for the people who live here and raise their family here and, and work here for the next, you know, generations, frankly. Um, this budget reflects things that we need right now. It is the right budget and the right time and the right place. So I'm very supportive of it. I'm worried about salary compression in the police department. I think some of my fellow council members are. This mayor has done a great job, frankly, at trying to tune that up. I think there's possibly more work that can be done and we'll learn more about that over the course of the next year as we try to fill vacancies. So that's something that, um, that I think we should keep an eye on and watch, but, um, I'm happy with the budget. I'm happy with where we're investing money. I'm happy with where we're saving money and I'm looking forward to voting yes.
Thank you to everyone from West Boise who came. You know, we've had some really contentious, uh, public hearings, um, over the last, you know, eighteen months and it's a, it's a wonderful opportunity to have people talk about what they want and their communities and, and they're taking interest in it. And I think for those of us in West Boise, we're in, we're in such a unique position. And, you know, many of you talked about it, where we are sidled next to several other cities. And so often, you know, our residents don't realize that they could have a lot more impact in Boise because of where we're located. You know, we're, we're west of schools. We live in Boise, you drive down Eagle Road. I mean, there's just a lot of different variables for, for us on the, on that side of town. So we, we had a very long zoning code. You know, what was it? Ten, six hundred pages? And this budget is two hundred thirty. And, uh, I've gone over it with a fine tooth comb and, uh, my yea or nay has come down to a couple of things. So first is public safety. It's the thing that, um, my area believes in the most, frankly, and wants the most. Last year, we didn't have an investment in the kind of public safety that I think people are looking for. They are looking for people. They are looking for officers. They are looking for uniformed folks that can come and help. And the same is true with fire. In this budget, we have twelve new true, what I call true public safety positions. And, uh, we're going to need more. This can't just be a one time blip. It's going to have to continue in order for us to meet the needs that have been clearly outlined for the city because of all of the reasons that, um, not only our city staff have suggested, but also, clearly outlined for the city because of all of the reasons that not only our city staff have suggested, but also the growth that we're experiencing in this valley. I love seeing us spend money on parks. I am very concerned that people are having to wait 20 years for a million dollar enhancement. I think it's way too long. I'm glad it's in the budget this year, at least for a planning perspective, but when we've got established parks and the money has been set aside, I think we need to think about how we make sure that those parks are actually getting completed in a in a decent amount of time. This the library situation is something that's near and dear to my heart. You know, as a child, I didn't have access to a public library. I lived in rural Idaho. I wasn't part of any city. And so in order to go to a library in another city, my parents would have had to pay money. There was a a fee back then that, you know, if you wanted to check out books, you would have to pay. And and the school library was closed during the summer. To me, libraries are the fundamental basis of our world. I mean, we've had them since the beginning of time. And we need more of them. We don't need less, and we need equal access to them. And I think what we've seen tonight and through the efforts of neighbors is that there there is a hole here. There is, you can call it a desert, you can call it a donut hole, but there is a hole that needs to be filled. If it was up to me, we would sock a bunch of money and do it tomorrow. But if we look at the long-term needs of the city, we have to see that there that we have to have a comprehensive plan. And in order for us to get what we need in West Boise, it's going to have to be a comprehensive plan. Because just doing it in this one area won't help us get what we need long term. And I think I'm going to say the word, but we're going to have to address the downtown library. I mean, we are, we are putting money into that, and it's not sustainable. So as I look at, you know, the the general budget, I think there's a lot of good here. And, you know, the tipping point for me is public safety. We didn't do this last year. I voted against the budget last year. We have 13 positions in it this year. I want to see those positions funded. I want to see them filled. And I want to build on the parks. I want to build on the library. But in order for us to get what we need in public safety today, I got to vote yes on this budget.
I just want to say thank you to staff for all the work that you've put into this budget. I've certainly learned a lot throughout this budget process, and I want to thank those folks who have come out here to advocate for what they believe in today. Seven years ago, I moved here with a young son, and I have two kids, and we live pretty close to the Coldneustick Library. And it's been just a great thing for us. Yesterday, I walked out of my bedroom, and we have a cabinet dedicated to our library books, and my daughter was doing a stack of 20 that she wanted to turn and a stack of 20 that she wanted to keep. And prior to marrying my wife, I don't think I knew you could check out that many books from a library. But I, for those of you who feel like the bureaucracy of what we're doing is too slow for you, I want to communicate to you the urgency that we feel to deliver on what you want and what you need. I also have some some feedback, and that is, I would really encourage you to think about what you want when it comes to a facility and think about how long you want that to take. I've done a lot of work on that front in an understanding what it would take to to get something brand spanking new versus what it would take to get a library like Hillcrest or Colister, which are some of our favorite. To give you some perspective on that, I agree with Councilmember Hallie Burton, that it probably costs between 20 and 40 million to get a new library. And the higher that price tag goes, the slower it's going to take for us to get it through, because there's going to be more hoops to jump through for those dollars. Our leases on Hillcrest and Colister, a 10-year lease, it's just over a million dollars. Those are things, those are manageable numbers, and those are things that I believe that this council would act on if we come back and we say, hey, here's our needs across the city. So I would encourage you to stay engaged. We hear you. We feel your sense of urgency, and we want this for you. Additionally, as it relates to parks, I just want to say thank you for the diligent efforts of the Parks and Rec Department. They've they've put up with a lot of me those last three months, talking to them about a park in my neighborhood that I'd like to see develop more quickly, and that is Spalding Ranch. I toured it this morning. A lot of great opportunities there, but there's about 1.6 million dollars for us to build a road, a parking lot. And if we have enough money, some bathrooms to have public access there. And I'm really excited for that, that that property holds a lot of promise for what the city can do. And and I'm hope I'm hopeful that next year at this time, we'll be talking about more ways that we can promote public access to that facility. For those reasons, I'll be supporting the budget today, and I just want to say thank you to council for the help you've offered me and and for to staff for all the many questions you've answered for me. So thank you very much.
Well, I'd like to say a couple of things before a vote's taken. First, I want to thank the the directors of the departments that are here, and the teams from our departments that are here, and of course, all of you that are home and that have done this work day in, day out, to help this council and myself implement the priorities and values that we have in as fiscally responsible way as possible. And I just I deeply appreciate that each and every department that understands that we want to be a safe and welcoming city for everyone that understands we want to see investments in our neighborhoods to keep them safe, to keep them more and to make them more tightly connected, so we remain safe as we grow. And you've and also understands that we want to do that in a way that gives money back to those that need it most when we can, and takes as little as possible where we can. And so I really appreciate all the work that goes into that. And I want to thank those of you that are here, as well as for the record, everybody that's home that has tuned in and shared information at one point, whether it be through comments and hearings and meet the mayor sessions we've had, or neighborhoods and or by signing petitions, really appreciate it. Because ultimately, the feedback that we get does help us create this budget and that we're presenting today. And now it's up to us to implement it and to deliver those services for folks. And, you know, as I think about, you know, we talked a lot about libraries tonight, and I, I too, I can't remember this little girl's name. The oldest, I'm guessing you're about eight, since you have siblings that are 0246? Nine, okay. And I was like you and at your age, I like my summers were spent curled up. I was the oldest of four. And but curled up with a pile of books that I'd get from the library. And we had a library in a park that I loved to go to. If I was at my nana's house, we'd go to their little rural library. And but I just read constantly. That's what I like to do. And I'd like to do the same thing for my kids, right, to take them. I've got a daughter that reads like I did, and a son that not not so much. But branch libraries are important, and we and they're but they're real investments in in our community. And so the steps that we're taking next to plan to make sure that we're investing in responsible ways and with the resources that we have to serve you, to serve folks probably in Southeast Boise, that we don't necessarily know what that looks like, or other places that might need branches. This this plan will help us know how best to do that, and then how to figure out how most quickly to do it with the resources that we have. And so I look forward to seeing that. And I really look forward to building on the community engagement and that has been that you all have begun in many ways with your petition, but that also was begun by the library, and we looked at the services that our residents want to provide. And that was really fulfilling, not only for our staff and for council, who took it in for myself, but to see people engage and then to help us make better decisions is really important. And that's what'll come with this next phase of planning for our neighborhoods and how they access libraries. And on safety, I want to flag too, you know, we've talked now about facilities planning or parks planning. So Spalding has money that's being set as that's being pushed forward for this next year. And then, yes, there's the question about how we get bathrooms in so people actually access it. There's the impact fees that come from McDevitt that have been talked about tonight. We all and we've talked about facilities plannings for libraries, but we also have facilities, plannings, and needs for safety. And, you know, several months ago, the chief came, and for the first time ever, we talked about how in the future we'll build a neighborhood police stations, and that matters. And I bring it up because of the patrol issues that folks brought up. Like, right now, to patrol Southeast Boise, our officers are, you know, driving 40 minutes to from City Hall West to get to Southeast Boise. And if they're in Southeast Boise, they're driving 40 minutes to get back to McMillan and Five Mile, and we want to have landing places for them. So it could well be that we determine when we do a facilities plan that some of them are shared spaces with with libraries or fire stations, or there's standalone spots so that we can more easily and more quickly get patrol officers out into neighborhoods on a regular basis. And I just want to flag that because this gets back to the nuts and bolts where it might feel bureaucratic, but it helps us make decisions to deliver service for Boiseans, so we can continue to improve our quality of life. And so this budget has people investments in safety with a look ahead to what's next. And it has investments, as was brought up, in housing. It has investments in parks and plans for libraries, and all of those are really important, essential core functions to make sure that we say a safe and welcoming city for everyone. It was important to me that we do that while giving back. And so it was brought up, the Circuit Breaker Program. That's something that I'm really proud of, and I'm grateful that the council has been willing to continue to invest in that. Because there are many people on fixed incomes in this community that, you know, are still struggling, and it's a way that we can support them while supporting the next generation and the generation after that, as we're planning for facilities. So I want to thank the public that helps make this possible, the staff, again, that makes this possible. Each and every one of you that testified tonight and gave us ideas. I didn't talk about code enforcement. That's something we're thinking about. Because you've you've seen over time that when we get ideas and we figure out that, oh, we need, we need to add that in, it becomes part of the discussions that we have in our year, like our regular planning for what's next. And so really appreciate what we hear from the public, and it really does matter. And so with that, I'll just close with a thanks to council as well for the deliberations, the thought that went into this, the advocacy for your districts, if you have them, and the work with our staff to make sure that we get this right for the people of Boise. Thank you.
Clark, will you go ahead and call the roll?
Billups.
Yes.
Weddings.
Yes.
Agent.
Yes.
Hallie Burton.
Yes.
Nash.
Yes.
All in favor, motion carries.
Thank you. And now that moves it, the motion was to move it to first reading, which will be in August. Great. And now there is a fee hearing. Great.
Thank you very much, Madam Mayor, members of the council. Yes, we have two more presentations, albeit much briefer than than the first. On fees, the proposed budget document includes.
I'll I'll just pause you for a second. Everybody's more than welcome to say, if you have feedback, great. If you're wishing that you had snuck out before this started, we won't be offended if you head home. So just want to say that. I should have said that at the beginning. This is what this is a thing. This is where we've changed some fees for recreation programs, other things, and if it's a certain percentage, if it's a new fee or it grows a certain percentage, we have a hearing on it. Go ahead.
Thank you very much, Madam Mayor. The proposed budget document includes a schedule outlining all fees, regardless of whether they're changing or not. The schedule has 1,530 distinct lines. Of those lines, 734 fees are recommended to be increased. Approximately 700 are unchanged. We have 61 new fees for your consideration, 23 eliminations, as well as seven fees recommended to be decreased. All new fees or fee increases greater than 5% do require a public hearing before approval per state statute. I'll note that certain fees are not outlined in the fee schedule. Those fees include fees required to be updated via ordinance, such as development impact fees, which we'll be talking about in in a few moments, as well as certain fees that have complex valuation tables and are displayed elsewhere. Per Idaho code, fees are not to exceed the cost of the service being rendered. The majority of the increases for your consideration are to keep up with cost increases within the general fund. I'll note, as always, that we do have scholarship funding in place for youth participation in our parks and recreation programs. Certain fees are being adjusted by higher percentages than others after several several years of not being adjusted. And I'll note that our Planning and Development Services fees are not being updated as part of this proposed budget. There are funds that are recommended as part of the fiscal year 24 budget to perform a fee study. Upon completion of that fee study, we may see changes to the Planning and Development Services tables in subsequent years. Within our other funds, our Water Renewal Fund has a 9.9% recommended increase for our commercial fees and 7.5% for our residential. Within our Solid Waste Fund, 4.9% increase to cover increasing costs. And then within our Geothermal Fund, 4.9% to account for increasing costs, as well as reinvestment in our aging infrastructure. Before moving into the public hearing, I'd be happy to stand for any questions.
Any questions? All right, I will open the public hearing then. Would anybody like to comment on the fees? Anybody online? Any further things from council before I close the hearing? All right, I'm going to close the hearing.
Madam Mayor, I move that we approve Resolution 330-23, a resolution of the city of Boise to adopt newer increased fees or other charges with an effective date of October 1st, 2023.
You have a motion and a second discussion?
Madam Mayor, I just want to let Eric know that I appreciate you bringing up Parks and Rec Scholarship Program, because Parks and Rec really does an incredible job at making sure that no matter what, everybody has access to their programming. And they use that that scholarship program heavily. And so thank you for bringing that up.
All right, clerk, will you call the roll?
Billups.
Yes.
Weddings.
Yes.
Agent.
Yes.
Hallie Burton.
Yes.
Ash.
Yes.
All in favor, motion carries.
Thank you. And oh, there's another one. Thought you did them both at once. Go ahead.
Thank you very much, Madam Mayor, members of council. Our last public hearing, our last item is development impact fees. These require a distinct public hearing because they are updated via ordinance as opposed to resolution on the on the prior fees. The recommendation is for a 9.4% increase based on inflationary data. We we use Engineering News Record. We look at what the performance is and what the cost increases are for these type of projects. We use calendar year 2022. This is a consistent process that we've used in the past. 9.4% is the recommendation. That 9.4% was brought to our Development Impact Fee Advisory Committee in April of this year and was supported by by DFAC. That 9.4% increase will help to support some of the projects that we talked about today, items such as McDevitt or Spalding, you know, that are impact fee supported. As the costs go up, we need to ensure that we're we're collecting appropriate revenues to deliver upon those projects. So that 9.4% is recommended as part of this this action. With that, I'd be happy to stand for any questions.
Madam Mayor.
Yes, I'll have you go, and then you.
Eric, I I think it's worth noting, and I want to make sure that folks understand and there's clarity, because this this is a pretty steady line, and then it takes a dramatic jump in 2021, and that is because of it's tied to the building costs. So when when everything went crazy and things got more expensive, that's why it went up? Question mark?
Madam Mayor, Councilmember Willis, that is correct. We had to do a pretty significant increase last year to account for those increase in building costs.
Madam Mayor, thanks. I just wanted to underline that something that Eric said a moment ago, which is we just heard a lot of testimony about parks and a lot of discussion about what we can and can't fund. Where do we put things in the capital plan? Will we have money? Well, this is where the money comes from. This is this is how we fund parks. That's how we fund a lot of other things, too. But this adjustment here is directly tied to that conversation that we just had a moment ago. And so, you know, certainly, we should be tying our impact fees to the cost of development, but we should also be rigorous and robust about making sure we're doing a very good job of that. Because if we don't do a good job, we hear it on the back end, where's the money for my park? This is. This is, this is where it comes from.
Well, and I'll say too, I, I want to thank the internal team, of course, that works on this, but the Development Impact Fee Advisory Committee. Because if you remember at that spike, they came to us and said, we actually need to make some changes because we should have been collecting more. And so we, the council approved it and made some changes. And when we, there are some things that are impact fee eligible and some that aren't. So tonight, we talked about the impact fees and when they'd come in for McDevitt, the public was worried about inflation. This is recognizing inflation, so we've changed it. But there's also, just so that the public understands, there's regions within the city. So when there's a park like McDevitt in the west or out the Harris in the east, it's impact fee eligible. You have to wait for that district's impact fees to be what it is in order to develop that park. Because you can't take from one district to pay for another. And so that, that's a part of this as well, in terms of how the, how the planning and like the use of the funds come into play in addition to how they're changed to recognize the cost of, the impacts of inflation and the cost of building.
Madam Mayor.
Yes.
I just wanted to speak to that a little further. And we heard a lot of testimony in the zoning code rewrite about folks that are, lived here for a long time, that are established, that are paying into the property tax base, that don't want to be burdened financially for the cost of this new development, providing services to these places. And this is how we make sure that growth pays for itself. So I appreciate the work that's gone into proposing these numbers. And I'm strongly in support of development impact fees so that we can make these types of improvements that we want to. And so that the people that are responsible for the development are shoring that burden. And we're concentrating those costs where they should be in a fair and equitable manner. So thank you.
All righty, clerk, will you call the roll? Wait, no. Oh, there's a hearing. All right. No, no, I already, oh no, that was the last one. I'm sorry, they're running together. Is anybody here to talk about impact fees? All righty, I'll close the public hearing and we need a motion.
Madam Mayor, I move to place the development impact fee ordinance incorporating the proposed fee increases on the first reading calendar scheduled for July 18th, 2023.
Second.
You have a motion, second for the discussion. Clerk, will you call the roll?
Willits.
Yes.
Weddings.
Yes.
Agent.
Yes.
Hallie Burton.
Yes.
Nash.
Yes.
All in favor, motion carries.
Madam Mayor.
Yes.
I move that we adjourn.
Second.
All in favor.
I. We are. We adjourned. Thanks, everybody.